Good evening, Alex. To call this meeting to order, will you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, free, and just.
We start with a roll call.
Council President Albertson. Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Halloran. Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember Prince. Councilmember Perez.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
A roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
It's Council President.
I move to excuse the absent Councilmember.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, excuse the absent Councilmember. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Alright, motion carries. We're gonna start off tonight with a proclamation.
Hey, proclamation, National Community Planning Month. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning can help navigate this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Renton Planning Commission and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Renton, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional planners employed by the city of Renton and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim the month of October to be National Community Planning Month in the city of Renton, and I encourage all residents to join me in this special observance, and witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 13th day of October 2025. Signed, Mayor Armando Pavoni, City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Albertson.
Move to adopt the proclamation as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Albertson, seconded by Councilmember Halloran, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Alright, motion carries, and accepting the proclamation tonight is CED Planning Director, Matt Herrera.
Thank you, Mayor Pavoni, Council President Albertson, members of the City Council. On behalf of the city's planning staff, many of whom are here tonight, would like to thank you for recognizing October as National Community Planning Month. This month is an opportunity to highlight the value of fostering vibrant communities. It's also a time to reflect on the important work of our planners, our planning commission, also a few of them are here tonight, and and our community members who collaborate to create spaces that enhance our city. In the Department of Community and Economic Development, we take great pride in serving the Renton community. For many of us, public service is a calling and a motivation to constantly find opportunities to improve the quality of life for those that call Renton home. Planners not only aim to ensure a high quality of life for present-day residents, but also future residents that will someday call Renton home. This work could not be done without the ongoing support of our mayor and city council. Thank you once again for this wonderful recognition. I can tell you that Renton city planning staff look forward to continuing our mission to make Renton a thriving community for generations to come. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we're gonna take a picture now, right here. It's great to see that many of the planning teams show up. So Renton has a long history of having a culture of doing great planning. I want to thank that department for the work they do. Seems like every year, we're getting an award for the work that comes out of that department, so thank you. Alright, next up, we have a couple of public hearings. The first one is 2026, wait. What am I missing?
Special presentation.
Oh geez, I skipped ahead. Next up is Sorry, Josh. Next up is Special Presentation, PSRC Vision 2050 Award Presentation.
Alright, excellent. Mayor, thank you for having me. I thought you were setting up this award presentation because this is an award for good planning. That's why I'm here. For the record, I'm Josh Brown, Executive Director of the Puget Sound Regional Council. It is great to be back in Renton. I've presented a number of Vision 2050 awards over the years, but before we get started, I just have to say, go Mariners! We're all happy the game was earlier, right? That's why we're all here. So, our Vision 2050 awards are to recognize great work by our cities, counties, transit agencies, tribes, transit agencies and ports to move the region forward. My agency, the Puget Sound Regional Council, is a long-range planning agency, so I work for the city of Renton, along with over 80 cities and counties in the region, or four counties, and we develop regional plans that help to prepare for the growth that we know is coming in the future years. And to do that growth right, we need to be able to collaborate, work together, and be able to set regional priorities, and then roll up our sleeves and get those priorities done. So our Vision 2050 awards are really about recognizing that hard work from our partners and our member governments. So I'm here today honoring the city of Renton for your Rainier Grady Junction Environmental Impact Statement and Plan Action Ordinance. Is it a mouthful? Does that sound like a planning document, or what? So, what is this EIS and Plan Action Ordinance, you know, in layman's terms? It's really about helping to ensure that the places that you want to be able to have growth, that you're developing the right plans after community engagement so that growth can be done well, and when you have the investment that wants to be able to invest in your community to take advantage of the zoning and land use regulations that are in place, that it's a little bit easier to get the projects that you want done in your community organized. And, you know, the really important thing I would highlight about this work from the planning perspective is, we're investing, we're making historic investments, generational investments, in transit expansion in the Puget Sound region today. We know that. We're spending a lot of money to make those investments. And of course, we're not just building transit for the sake of transit, we're making investments, whether it be in light rail, heavy rail, or BRT, which will come to your community, you know, in the near future. We're making these investments to be able to build great communities. And the work that your city staff has done in concert with community engagement, being able to make it easier to have the right type of development that your community is supportive of, where we're building transit, it's getting the most out of those investments. So it's not just one piece of the puzzle, it's not just building the transit, it's having the support from the community so that we can fully leverage those transit investments for affordable housing, for economic development, to meet our climate goals, to build a quality community. You've done all that with this work. So my hat's off to the city of Renton for your work. Again, there's a lot of acronyms in EIS and PAO, but at the end of the day, it's your community coming together to get the most out of investments that are coming to your community, figuring out how to do it in a way that is supported by your local residents. Job well done.
Yeah, we'll take the picture.
Perfect.
There's gotta be a picture. Alright. Congratulations. Lots around planning. Okay, thank you. Now, we're gonna do the public hearings. We do have two public hearings scheduled tonight, and the first one is 2026 CDBG Funds, Proposed Use of 2026 Community Development Block Grant Funds. And presenting is Lori Fleming.
Good evening, Council, and Mayor, and members of the public. Tonight, we are holding our annual Proposed Use of 2026 Community Development Block Grant Funds. And it's a public hearing, so hoping to get any comments from the public. These are federal dollars. They're from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and they must be used to serve low and moderate income persons. Renton is a joint agreement city, which is a special designation that, because we partner with King County to help us administer the grants, they've been a great partner, and they do a lot of the policy and regulation and environmental review, and a lot of the onerous-led workforce in making sure that we spend these funds properly. For 2026, we're expecting $653,000, but I'm gonna qualify that because these funds are uncertain at this time. This is just an estimate based on what we received this year, so we may not get any funds next year, we may get a small amount, we don't know. The funding is still uncertain at this time, but we're all just proceeding like we are gonna get them. So we're holding the public hearing tonight, and we're just basing estimates on our current allocations. So our total direct entitlement is about $653,000, but since we do partner with King County, they keep a little bit of that. They keep about $78,000 for the administration of it, and then there's also allocations to different county-wide programs. The big one I wanted to point out is the King County Housing Repair Program. We give about $163,000 of our allocation to that program, but Renton residents last year spent over, we received over $300,000. So we are very much getting our money's worth out of that program. And then the housing stability, we got about the same amount that we put in on that one, and that is a rent assistance, utility assistance program. And again, all of those do serve Renton residents directly. So that leaves about $379,000 for Renton to allocate. So we do about $65,000 for staff time in administering the funds, and then we're proposing about $313,000 to add to the Don Person Renton Senior Activity Center Improvement Project. That is a project that we already have CDBG funds in. We did allocations of the CDBG the last couple of years to that project, and it includes heating, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC, it includes roof replacement, and also siding. And then previous allocations of the CDBG were for our downtown streetscapes projects. And it's very common to kind of use a couple of years of funding and combine the money so you have enough money to actually do a nice project. So it's not anything unusual to combine multi-years of the funding. So again, the Renton Senior Center project that we would like to use the funding for, it's roof, HVAC, siding. We're able to use it because seniors are a presumed low, moderate income group. The senior center is older, 45 years, and definitely in need of some improvements. And again, it's a good use of the funds because for efficiency, it's using already previous CDBG-funded years. Part of the allocations that we have to do include a contingency plan, so if we do get more or less than estimated, that we would fund the planning admin to the max amount allowable, and then any other increases, decreases, again, would just go right into the senior center project. So our recommendations are to hold the public hearing tonight to get any comments from the public on these use of the funds, and then the item is on the business agenda later for approval, and it was heard by the Finance Committee earlier today.
Questions? Lori, this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
If there's no public comment, I move the, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I received no correspondence, and I don't believe anybody signed up to speak.
Oh, we have nobody signed up.
Then I move to close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember McIrvin, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Alright, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. We are on to the next public hearing, which is the Mid-Biennium Budget Adjustment, the first of two hearings, and presenting will be Carrie Roller.
Alright, thank you. Good evening. My name's Carrie Roller, I'm the Finance Administrator, and tonight we have a public hearing on the Mid-Biennial Budget Adjustment. The purpose of the budget, Mid-Biennial Budget, is to really look at our revenues halfway through the biennium, make sure that we are on track there, and also to set the property tax levy for next year. This is a list of legislation that we will be passing throughout this process. There's a calendar of events. We have our first public hearing this evening, and we have a second next Monday, and then we will be doing first and second reading on the legislation on October 27th and the 3rd. Here's a picture of the property tax levy for 2026. We are estimating it to be $26.6 million. The city is assessing the allowed 1% increase by law, plus any new construction or prior year refunds. This may change a little bit based on what we get from King County, and we will definitely present to council the final figures before we pass the ordinance. Here is an overview of the proposed general fund revenue adjustments at $19.5 million. Most of those are a direct result of year-to-date revenue collections, and a large majority of those are coming from VNO tax, utility tax, and sales tax. Here's a proposed list of the proposed expenditure adjustments at $22.1 million. Some other funds that we have adjustments for outside of the general fund are our capital funds, where we're proposing to add some parks projects, transportation projects, airport projects, and surface water. We also have some fee schedule changes to our Maplewood Golf Course, as well as some fees that we collect on behalf of other agencies, the Regional Fire Authority, and the School District Impact Fees. With that, I will turn it back to you for any public comment.
Questions? Alright, do we have any correspondents?
Received no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We do have a few people signed up for public hearing. I want to remind everyone that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. If a response is requested, make sure that you ask for that. And then each speaker will be given three minutes. When I call your name, please step up the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. And first is Joquin Delaga. Am I saying that right?
Joquin. Joquin.
So, Joquin Delaga, Mr. Mayor.
Joquin Delaga, yes.
Joquin Delaga, resident of Federal Way, works here at the Renton Courthouse, as a certified peer counselor for our residents here in our community for Renton. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I want to bring up about the EHM. I guess it's the electric home monitoring. Every time in court, if you don't know about it, explain it real quick. Somebody, the judge tells this person he has to go and get EHM or DNA swap, she can literally just tell him to walk out the door, down the hall, and get it done. My job as a resource is to provide the support to that person and tell them where to go and how to do it. If you take out the EHM, what's gonna happen is, every, and other courts too, this is called Puyallup, Black Diamond, they don't have EHM in their courts. So I see it. They, I give them the resource where to get it, they fail to do it, they end up back in court, they end up back in jail. If you, if they have it immediate, that support and that resource in the courthouse, it's awesome, because it helps that individual stay out of jail and get back to the community and do what the court tells them to do. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next up is Mark Coleman.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Did we, are we taking comments on the, on the, isn't the public hearing still open?
This is part of it. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is about the biennium.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Next up is Mark Coleman.
Hello, I am Mark Coleman, the president of the Renton Police Guild. I found out that we're losing our EHM program four weeks ago. It would have been nice to have found out four years ago that there was a problem with EHM, so we could have taken, taken part in active program management to improve the program, but we found out four weeks ago. It seems evident that powers that be are trying to ramrod this decision through, so no one can take a close look at what's going on in the complexity of how the EHM program is ran. They tell me it's fiscally irresponsible, we can privatize it. Privatizing public safety is a dangerous business. Subcontracting union jobs is anti-labor. What else are we going to privatize in the city of Renton in regards to public safety? Domestic violence, animal control, parking? If money is the incentive for public safety, then it's bad for the community. If money is the incentive, then there is no incentive to do the right thing. Our two EHM employees have been with the city of Renton for almost 30 years each. They plan their retirements around their careers. They've been backgrounded to a police department standard. I ask, who are these privateers that we're gonna be sending into other people's homes? People who have committed a crime and are trying to get back on their feet through a diversion program? Who are we sending into their homes? What level of backgroundering are they being backgroundered to? Our department is being forced to cannibalize its own budget, cut money here and spend it there. Either EHM is valuable, or it's not. If it's not valuable, then the city has been knowingly wasting taxpayer money for the last 30 years. But the feedback I get is that EHM is a very valuable program. A lot of people have been, have gotten their lives back because of the direct counseling of the quality of our EHM program, and it's a model in the community. I've heard that directly from WASPIC. And, you know, in addition, our EHM folks do urinalysis, DNA, fingerprints, a whole bunch of other things, in addition to direct counseling, people who need to help up through a diversion program. Who's gonna do that? What burden is this gonna put on the court, which is gonna be, put a burden on the 2170 Union? Right now, in the four weeks I've had to get my head around EHM, there's four different organizations working separately. We have the police department, whose budget is at issue, who could provide leadership. We have EHM and the court that's in the middle, and we have finance on the end. Finance has taken over billing of the EHM program. I know billing is late, our people are not getting needed reports that they're supposed to get. One of those reports is late as of October 2024.
I need you to wrap up your comments for us, bud.
Okay. These four entities need to be working together. I suggest a task force that can be provided by the leadership of the police department. There's a sergeant directly responsible for EHM. That person can be a liaison to all four of these groups, and it could be a team effort to make EHM thrive and be a budgeted part of the city of Renton, and continue into 2026 as it's already budgeted. Thank you.
Alright, next up is Rayanne Myers.
Rayanne Myers, Olympia, Washington. Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. My name is Rayanne Myers, and I manage the Correctional Options Program with the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. I've been with WASPIC since 1996, and we actually are the vendor for the Renton Home Detention, along with many other local, state officials within Washington State. I'd like to talk briefly why it's important for the city of Renton to continue the oversight and involvement of the supervision of individuals who come through the Renton Court System. And I would also be speaking for anybody not contracted with us. I've grown up in monitoring, I'm passionate about it, and private resellers cannot necessarily do what you can do. Under state law, the city of Renton remains a supervising agency for those individuals. The responsibility does not go away if the participants are told to find their own electronic monitoring program. Unfortunately, when this happens, it can lead to serious problems. There have been, there has been very little oversight for reseller programs. They do not necessarily have to turn in their background check, they do not have to show they have insurance, nor do they have an incentive other than financial to help this client succeed. We've seen private resellers and unverified providers using equipment bought on the secondary market. They don't necessarily work, nor do they know how it works when they come to court if they will testify. Devices that just simply do not work. Even more concerning, there have been cases where the clients have been victimized financially, by being paid to not be supervised, or being told, "Just pay me and we'll not turn you in for any violation." And unfortunately, some have been sexually incentivized to provide their home monitoring, turned in to say, "If you will have sexual relations with me, I will not turn in your violations." That has happened, that has happened in this state. Even more concerning, the people who are most vulnerable, we should be taking care of them. If our mission is honesty, integrity, and Renton Police Department, Renton Home Detention, Georgia and Kenny have run a wonderful program. They are the leaders in this state, they are the best program we've had since 1996, when I have started there. We use them as an example, we hold them up when somebody else is starting a program. They have had people from other jurisdictions come here to learn what they do. They are amazing mentors for the clients coming through your court. They can help your clients have a continuity of service. They are not having to figure out how to take a bus, as, you know, Joquin had said, that they do not just go down the hall. It is difficult for some of these clients just to find where they need to go. And I have been here when Georgia and Kenny have worked with their clients, they offer support, accountability, direction, they are kind, they have boundaries, and they let their clients know how they can succeed. And they have seen it, they have a pile of thank you notes from their clients, thanking them for what they have done. We cannot incentivize financially
Wrap up your comments, please.
Oh, thank you. We cannot just put a price tag on sending our clients elsewhere. It is very important, since you will still be supervising the reseller they randomly go out to, you are ultimately responsible for them by state law. You should take a serious look at what you're gonna do with your EHM program. Thank you so much, have a great evening.
Alright, next up is Georgia Bunko. Georgia?
Evening, I'm Georgia Bunko, I was from Puyallup. I have done the EHM program since 1999, I began working for the city of Renton since 1990. I began working for the city of Renton since 1990. Um, thank you for letting me speak tonight, I was not expecting to speak, but I just want everyone to know that my coworker Kenny and I, we are passionate about our jobs. We feel like we do a good job. We take into account the, the defendant that we are working with, we also take into account the public safety of the person that we're working with and, and also the, the citizens of Renton. Um, we're really hoping that the city will vote us in. I don't know what to say, but, um, thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. All right, that's everyone that signed up. What's the wish of the council at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
To move we close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, public hearing is closed, thank you. We are on to the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Join the Renton Police Department this Thursday, October 16th, from 4:30 to 6:00 PM for cops and barbers at Good Vibes Only Barber Shop located at 3700 Northeast 4th Street. Police officers will be on site for open and honest conversations that build trust and understanding, ask questions, share your thoughts, and maybe even get a trim. Washed out will begin tolls on State Route 167 starting Monday, October 20th. For more information about the new toll lanes, please visit the tolling website at Please be sure to visit our website at rentonwa.gov/events for more upcoming and holiday-themed events around your community. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. Sir.
All right, thank you. Next up is audience comment. Want to remind everybody that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. Um, when I call your name, please step up to the podium, you have three minutes, please give your name and city of address for the record. There's a little timer, when the time hits yellow, please start wrapping up your comments. And first up, we're back to Joaquin Delgado. And he was signed up in both places and he left, so I don't think.
Yes, sir.
He's, yeah. I don't mean, I think he was meant to sign up for the last one, okay. Uh, next up is Paul Dutton.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Um, my name's Paul Dutton, I'm a resident of Renton. Uh, this morning I addressed the Renton Regional Fire Authority Governance Board about the existing Fire Station 16 site. Um, for those of you that are not familiar, the existing Fire Station 16 is surrounded on three sides by King County Parks property, and it's also in a desert area where there are no city parks. And I guess my hope here is just to kind of implore the city to explore the idea of acquiring that site of Fire Station 16, um, for the purpose of creating a, another community center on the east, far east side of the city. And there's also quite a bit of green property in there as well, which would be great for a walkable neighborhood park area. Um, that's, that's really all I have, it's just an idea of just planting a seed, several residents of the area have kind of, you know, been like, hey, what's going to happen when the new fire station's complete? And just want to, uh, you know, provide a potential solution, which I think would check a lot of boxes, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up is Diane Dobson.
Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor, Renton City Council members, I'm Diane Dobson, a Renton resident. I speak tonight not as an adversary, but as someone who cares deeply about Renton, about our safety, our unity, and the trust our residents place in those elected to serve. Our council positions are nonpartisan for a reason. The moment partisan politics enters local public safety, we stop listening and start dividing. People are alienated, communities fracture, and solutions disappear. We're entrusted to protect our city, not politicize it for influence or attention. This past Friday, I stood outside my pace, place of employment when a woman was shot in the neck while withdrawing money at an ATM. I was less than half a block away as officers and K-9 units sprinted past me in pursuit of the suspect. It was broad daylight, bright in our downtown, and yet there was not a single mention of the shooting at the following council meeting, no acknowledgement from public safety chair person, no comment from the public safety committee. In fact, I don't even see an October public safety committee scheduled. How can we expect residents to feel heard or protected when our leadership doesn't even speak to the violence happening right outside our doors, unless it's violence that fits an agenda and can be politicized for attention or gain? In the past three months alone, I've seen three bodies on our sidewalks, including the woman who was beaten in mid-September. Unlike a council member shared at this September 22nd meeting that they spoke to the victim the next day and heard that one side of the story, I was there that night and I know the truce of what happened and what started it all. Yet before any judge or jury had weighed the facts, a council member told a story to the public, declaring guilt before charges had even been filed or those accused brought before a judge. That politicized narrative created fear in our transgender community, condemnation toward local youth, and confusion among residents. It divided us when we should have been coming together. I was also across the street in August when a man was shot five times at the transit center by teenagers, and no charges were filed. And in April 2024, I was the victim of an attack in my own workplace, cornered and threatened by a man who said the voices in his head told him to rape and kill the next person he encountered. Once again, no charges filed. So instead of rewriting crime stories for political gain, why aren't we addressing the lack of accountability that allows these incidents to keep happening? Why aren't we examining prosecutorial decisions that enable a Wild West mindset where people no longer feel protected? Businesses are struggling, residents and patrons are choosing to go elsewhere because they feel safer elsewhere, yet we're told crime is down based on 2021 and 2023 data, the peak of the post-pandemic crime, creating that false bottom. If we want truth, compare the stats to pre-pandemic baselines and then listen to what our community is living through. And as we prepare to invest $10 million into our downtown core for the World Cup Games to welcome visitors and showcase Renton, while many who live and work here don't feel safe today. It's bad enough when national politics divide the country, it's devastating when they divide a city. When council members use social media or TikTok to call people names, mock residents, or weaponize identity and ideology, it erodes trust at the most basic grassroots level. Leadership requires restraint, it requires respect, and it requires remembering that those who disagree with you are still the people you were elected to serve. So tonight I ask this council, will you be the kind of leaders who rise above politics and stand together for truth and safety and accountability? Because Renton doesn't need more headlines or TikToks, Renton needs healing, Renton needs courage, and Renton needs you to lead like our city depends on it because right now it does.
You.
Thank you for.
All right, next up is Marvin Rosetti.
I bring props. So, first of all, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and the general public who are watching us on TV tonight. I'm Dr. Marvin Rosetti, and I represent Eco Infinity Nation, um, where I'm here to say thank you to the city of Renton and to its staff. Uh, for the last year, we've been promoting our initiative of healthy homes, healthy kitchens, and healthy communities, and educating the ways, um, the public can make your home environmentally friendly and healthier. Uh, this year, thanks to the state legislature, using funding from the Climate Commitment Act, Eco Infinity partnered with King County Public Health to distribute air purifiers to communities that were impacted from regional airport operations, wildfire smoke, and other air quality issues that affect vulnerable populations in South King County. Um, over 5,000 of these units were distributed throughout the county, uh, where Eco Infinity were able, through our government partners and other, uh, community organizations, um, for ourselves, we were able to distribute a thousand of those units, uh, both in Seattle, Des Moines, Taquilla, Sea-Tac, and of course, here in the city of Renton. And again, the reason why I'm here is to say thank you, uh, to all the members of the city staff and parks and the community services who partnered with Eco Infinity to make sure that residents were affected by, were affected by the quality, um, air issues, uh, were provided these units. I wanted to bring this unit out here to explain just how large and how heavy these units are, and I have to give a big thank you to all of the staff who brought them out there. From April, between April and July, we had about 125 or so units, uh, to the Highlands Picnic, to the Community Center for the, this year's health fair, uh, to, I believe, another picnic over there in Renton Hill. Um, that was all thanks to city staff, so again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, we even had some time to distribute an extra 50 at the Good War, uh, Washington, um, temple where the city community, where, where the city community worship, and we were able to distribute even more of those to Renton community, to, um, local, uh, Renton residents. Um, I also want to give a special recognition to Jennifer Spencer and Remy King, um, for all those out there, um, in, uh, over, uh, watching on TV. Uh, they are the valiant staff with, uh, Renton City Parks and Public Works, and they helped set up, they staged, uh, and they curated everything to make sure that Renton residents who needed these units got them out there. Um, so again, thank you to that. And if Eco Infinity ever has this program again, I couldn't think of no better partners than the staff that I will be calling from, uh, especially here with the city of Renton. So if the city could please join me in thanking them for their hard work and to the dedication of residents. And again, thank you, thank you, and thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, well, I want to say thank you to the, um, residents that showed up tonight to speak on both, uh, public hearings, um, and during, um, public comments, um, we heard about the use of, of possible, um, surplus property from the RFA for parks, uh, public safety, and then a thank you for the air filter system. So thank you, we do appreciate your time and coming and speaking at council meetings, so, um, next up is the consent agenda, there are three items for council consideration. Are there any that you would like pulled for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
Hearing none, move to, uh, approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business, Council President Albertson.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Um, Councilmember Rivera.
Finished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee has eight committee reports this evening.
All right, let's see. Uh, Finance Committee Committee Report, the first is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment $12,726,943.69 for a number of vouchers, uh, payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and, uh, there were zero wire transfers this time. And then payroll total payment of $2,146,869.19 for payroll vouchers, including, uh, 760 direct deposits and 11 checks. This is the November, or excuse me, September 1st through 15th pay period. This was approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I'm with the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, and second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
Hey, the next report is regarding an interagency agreement with the, uh, Washington State Department of Ecology. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Interagency Agreement Number SWMLSWFA-2025-Renton-00311, which is our contract number 25022, with the State of Washington Department of Ecology to accept $131,694.46 in funds from the local solid waste financial assistance program to implement a waste reduction technical assistance program for commercial, uh, customers. This too is approved virtually by the chair and signed by the, uh, vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding an addendum to a lease with a vendor at the, uh, airport. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to approve Addendum 9-25 to Lease Agreement 99-003 with Lane Hanger Condominiums Owners Association, which adjusts the annual lease revenue to $68,253.90 plus leasehold excise tax, and updates required insurance coverage and the lessor's, uh, address. And this too is approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
Hey, the next report is regarding a, in a, a reimbursable agreement with the, uh, FAA for an air traffic control tower siting study. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration, the FAA, to reimburse the city in an amount not to exceed $118,335.70 for air traffic control tower siting services. Again, this is approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
Next up is our, uh, renewal of our healthcare management administrator agreement for 2026. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to renew the healthcare management administrators agreement and 2026 rates at a total expenditure of $365,000. The total cost for HMA's administrative services is increasing by 0.37% for 2026 and will be 4621 per employee per month. The HMA fee increase in 2025 was 3.2%. Enrollment varies during the year and is approximately 656, which is 592 active members and 64 retirees, the cost is 656, uh, times 4621 times 12 months is about $363,765. And based on total actuarial, actuarial projected cost increases to the HMA medical plan for active employees, the 2026 monthly HMA contribution rates for all employees will increase a total of 6.07%. Uh, this was approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
Hey, the next report is regarding the Kaiser Permanente Healthcare Premium Rates for 2026. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the renewal of the fully insured health plan by Kaiser Permanente at an annual cost of $367,500 for 2026. Kaiser's premium rates are increasing 8% for the active employee plan and, and increasing slightly for LEOFF, uh, left one retirees with Medicare coverage. The increase compares favorably overall to premium rate increases within the industry. Upon approval by the city, Kaiser Permanente will issue the updated plan document. This too was approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a bid award for Legacy Square Phase 2. Uh, the Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the request to award the construction contract for Legacy Square Phase 2 to Anderson Construction in the amount of $1,248,000 excluding sales tax. Uh, the committee further recommends approval of budget appropriations equal The committee further recommends approval of budget appropriations equal to the $1,498,650 Department of Commerce grant to be included in the third quarter 2025 budget adjustment to fully fund the project. This is signed by the, well, it's approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair and member.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries.
Right, next is the proposed use of the 2026 Community Development Block Grant Funds that we heard earlier in the public hearing. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve and accept the 2026 Community Development Block Grant Funds and contingency plan as proposed and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the grant agreements, subject to approval as to legal form. This was approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
One more time, I'll ask that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Development Committee has two reports to present.
All right, the first P and D Committee Report is regarding the appointment to the Planning Commission. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the appointment of dorsal plants to fill the vacant position on the Planning Commission with a term expiring June 30th, 2027. This is signed by the vice chair and member of the committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move, council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries.
All right, and the final report from P and D Committee is the regarding the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. The committee further recommends that the ordinance for this item be prepared and presented for first reading when it is complete. This too is signed by the vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move, council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report.
A second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All right, motion carries. All right, thank you. So, Councilmember Perez is not here, we're going to save Councilmember Perez's voice, and we're going to move on to Councilmember Van.
Um, no unfinished business, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next up is legislation, and we have none. So we're on to new business. Council President Albertson.
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, October 20th, the committee of the whole will meet in the council conferencing center. And there's one item on the agenda, and that is the comprehensive plan transportation element. And then at 7 o'clock on the same evening, October 20th, the council will have its regular meeting here in council chambers and via video conference. And I did say 7:00 p.m., right? I think so. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Per usual, the Public Safety Committee will be on the third Monday of the month, which is next Monday, October 20th, and we are scheduled for 3:45 p.m. We have a very robust agenda, which is usually planned about a month or two ahead of time. This was actually scheduled right after the shooting at our transit center. I reached out to my colleague, King County Prosecutor Lisa Mannion, who will be coming and giving a presentation regarding gun violence at the Public Safety Committee meeting at 3:45 on October 20th. We'll also do a debrief on the emergency management run-through event, which you may have seen happening last week, an update on our not-so-great building on Fifth and Sixth and Park, unfortunately, another update on RFA, much needed, and emerging issues in public safety. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee will be meeting at 5:00 p.m. on Monday, October 20th. There are five items on the agenda. First is change order number two with Doolittle Construction LLC for the 2024 Slurry Seal Project. Second, change order number 48 with Pavetta Brothers Construction Incorporated for the Rainier Avenue South Quarter Approvements Phase 4 Project. Third, Construction Management Services with KBA Incorporated for the Oaksdale Avenue Southwest Pavement Preservation Project. Fourth, Stride Programs Station Access Allowance Agreement with Sound Transit for Lake Washington Boulevard Hawk Signal Project. And finally, emerging issues in transportation. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Perez.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
I'll have to just skip over for you. All right, Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mayor. The Utilities Committee has a meeting on October 20th, 2025 at 3:00 p.m. The location is council conference room via video conference. We have four items on the agenda. One is late commerce agreement request, High Avenue Northeast Sewer Extension LA 25-001. Two, extension of XNet Systems LLC small sale franchise. Three, late commerce agreement request, Posano Multi-Family Water Extension LA-24-001. And four, emerging issues in utilities.
All right, thank you. So before we go on, I take a little point of privilege here and first read this, which is, I was out last week, I had the opportunity to travel to Nishiwaki, Japan, one of our sister cities alongside Dr. Harden, Dr. Yoshida Harden from the Renton Technical College, and a few staff members. It was my first visit to Japan. Then it's the first actually delegation since 2016. After Nishiwaki visited Renton last year to renew ties and revive the middle school exchange program, we began planning this trip. We timed it to coincide with their 20th anniversary of an expanded city. They had two cities that joined together, and it was an extremely meaningful moment. A key focus was proposing a culinary exchange program between Nishiwaki, the city of Renton in partnership with Renton Technical College and the Hyatt Regency at Southport. This initiative would offer RTC students a unique workforce development opportunity and strengthen our international ties with that city. During the visit, I met with Mayor Katayama, council members, and city leaders, along with International Goodwill Exchange Association leaders, and their hospitality was exceptional. We met with chefs, Saki Brewer and restaurant owners to explore how this exchange could take shape. We left with shared commitment to move forward. I also want to talk a little bit about Nishiwaki. What was really amazing is they're a textile manufacturing hub, and the city actually adopted their own pattern and material. This was the gift that they gave us. It says Renton on it, it's a little bear, and it's their, and this is their pattern. It's an official city pattern. And so I had forgotten my tie for this occasion, so I actually shopped in their local economy and bought a tie. So ties were on my mind, and I said, you guys should make ties out of that material. And lo and behold, before the meeting was over, they handed me their tie. This was a prototype that they had developed, so it was a meaningful trip. It was extremely short, it was well-prepared. I want to give a huge shout out to our staff over here, Laura from Communications in KC. And then the biggest thank you to Manami Imoko, who serves on our Equity Commission, but she was our translator. She was with us the whole time, and it was quite a trip. It was very enjoyable, and I'm sure it'll be their turn to come over here next, and we'll send a delegation down the road. And with that, it, what's the wish of the council?
Move adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Council President Albertson, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? And motion carried, we're adjourned.